Please drive slowly, we love our children.
Harlan County Kentucky Transparency is live on his YouTube channel. We have a friend with us, Ben, we'll introduce in a minute.
Maybe.
Allow me to introduce myself, I'm the mayor of the streets. And this is Harlan County Kentucky Transparency, looking like one of the North Carolina Tyrant Hunters in this bitch. Go tag them and get them in this, or Joe Cole either one. He's stupid. He's stupid.
Here's your seat. Anybody got any questions in front of you? Place somebody to check some things. Motion accept. So a motion, I'm already, I'm already got a sec, is everybody good with the flag? Of course, I have any questions later, I'll just play back. Alright, next we're gonna move on to the minute, last month.
City Mayor Eric for the county, we can visit October the big thing. President and Mayor of the men, Ernie Wood, current counts, Preston Plon, Mary Call, and that Rick, Rick Lynn, this is Paul's report. Eric Cove with the Backroads Appalachia, that is Fred, speaking with the city council, we're trying out seven projects. Coming to the city of Eric, the finance report is red, Larry makes a motion to accept the report, Jackie second, all present agree. Matt, from the September 23rd meeting, all red, Larry makes a motion to accept the minutes, and Charles second, all present agree. Matt from the September 23rd meeting, all red, Preston makes a motion to accept the minutes, Jackie second, all present agree. Tourism report is given, Ernie makes a motion to accept the report, President Preston second, all present agree. Fire report's given, Ernie makes a motion to accept the report, Larry second, all present agree. Uh, police report's given, Larry makes a motion to accept the report, Charles second, all present agree. Fire report's given, Ernie makes a motion to accept the fire report, Jackie second, all present agree. Resolutions for the water tank and the leak repairs, uh, are red, the water tank and leak repair grants are red. Uh, Jackie makes a motion to accept the resolution for grant two four KG W two one eight. Preston second, all present agree, Larry makes a motion to accept the reading of the resolution for grant two four KG W one one eight. Jackie second, all present agree, Jackie makes a motion to adjourn, and Larry second, all present agree.
Larry makes a motion to accept the settlement, is that what they do? Why we're gonna pass that around? This time we're gonna, we're gonna give four reports.
Um, really nothing, major report. Uh, this water loss is just a little bit up, uh, we did find another main leak today, which bring those numbers right back down. Uh, it's just that time of year, and it's the same old spot we've had issues with, that on Dean Lane. I think this makes about six or seven, it's been fixed in the past three months down there, so, uh, don't know if the ground just shifting or what, the pops and things seem fine, it's just, don't really, it's really unexplainable why it's all happening in one area, but, uh, but other than that, it's been relatively quiet, the mine is coming down a little bit, but, uh, you know, we've still been able to maintain. Uh, we've had an issue with the main leak a few weeks ago, but other than that, we did pretty smooth state. No real changes, I know Mike has got our, uh, everything submitted to the state, waiting on approval from them for, uh, the tank project to proceed and go forward, so, he could speak to that better than I could, but it's just kind of held up in litigation on the state side.
Mike, when did you say that two point eight million was gonna start coming down?
Uh, the two point six million, we just, uh, the attorney got this exhibit number, it's five or six. And, uh, we're ready to, we'll house submit that in the morning, and that should be the last exhibit before we can start drawing that money.
Okay, so maybe by first of the year, they should start having that in America.
Yes, so, the way that's gonna set up is, they're gonna pay for the design, which has already been done, and they'll pay for that upfront, and then they'll pay for the construction. When we get the bids, then they'll give you all the construction money, and then, when we get the construction bids, then we'll end the contingency and figure out the end of the Monday.
Yeah, so that'll be the first draw on it.
Yes.
That's the first in the year.
Yes.
Or so.
Yes.
Okay, I just, I wanted to clarify, I wanted to put that in my minutes, so that we have it.
So we're looking at probably a March, April completion.
Yeah, oh.
Start of construction in the spring, March or April.
Yeah, start at least.
And that also includes some other things too with that tank, don't it, all these things?
Okay, yeah, we'll have, with the, the tank project, we'll have a backwash pump, which will allow us to use the entire.
Tank.
Whereas now, we can only take it down so far, and we have to use the head on that tank for him to backwash. So, after we met with Division of Water when we were down last November, December, I made that recommendation, and he said that was absolutely what we needed to do, so, that was kind of a joint effort between us and the Division of Water to fix that problem, to use the entire storage, not just a portion of the tank, which is what's being used now.
Basically, it's just a pressure, just whatever water's in the tank, just brings the water in, and it's only thirty-three feet tall, so you're looking at, you know, a max of ten pounds of pressure to come in, so when that gets down to half capacity, you're looking at five pounds of pressure to backwash filters, and it's just not enough flow to adequately clean them. And sometimes you get a little lower than that, but with the pump, you increase the pressure, get a, get a good clean.
And we ended it last week, I think it was eight feet, so that's where, you know, that, that's right on the border of why we couldn't use that for cleaner. And that's where we have the pump, and then, and then we'll have a separate contract that will be to clean all the tanks inside, and, uh, put in zone meters to help reduce the water loss, fix certain areas that were identified, maybe this road that you mentioned tonight, you know, it's had six leaks on it, so we do have money. One point two million, that'll be going to that as a separate project, water loss reduction project.
And that money will include cleaning the tanks too?
Yes.
Professional cleaning?
Yes, divers and, and all that, we're gonna have to take them out of service. There'll be scuba divers and everything going there, inspecting tanks, cleaning tanks, do all that.
And that's something they suggest, it's done so, so many years anyway, but it's not something that's really pushed, but they do highly suggest it, but it's just something that, you know, water companies rarely have the money extra just to have the tank cleaned. It's kind of out of sight and out of mind, it's on the inside anyway, but there's something that could, could be done. And I did meet with Division of Water today, uh, looked up at South Branch, we talked about exploring that area, and it's not looking like that's gonna be a viable option for a mine source, still may be an option for something otherwise, but the mine source, it's, it's just about dry, so, um, and this one spot we looked at wasn't actually bone dry, but we're gonna go up to another opening to see if there's any water up there, and that's gonna happen after the first year, but we've already got the contacts and, uh, locations and things, so, we're working on that to make sure that that is, uh, we want to totally eliminate it or keep it as a possibility as far as getting raw water, so.
Yeah, let's look for the mine sources, we've got right here is the home drive this time of year.
Yeah, 'cause if it, if it's only picked up when our mine that we currently have is picked up and produces well, it's really not gonna help us any anyway. Uh, we've gotta choke it down certain times of year because we've got more water out of that one than what we need, uh, during a few months out of the year, so.
And speaking of the mine source and other source, we did apply for Kentucky Waters Grant for one point five million for a new water source in the source of the river, uh, they have scored those. Uh, we scored, they scored us like sixty-four, which kind of ranks us in the twenty-five to thirty range. But the way KIA's gonna do it, they're gonna submit all projects and let the governor's office and general assembly, so just because we're ranked in the top thirty don't mean that they'll fund us, we'll have to have boots on the ground by our legislature in January and February to make that go in, there was actually seventy-five million in that grant, and there was over seven hundred and twenty-eight million requested. There was a hundred and seventy-five applications.
So it sounds like, you know, we've already got Adam Bowles always willing to help us. And it sounds like, uh, Scott's gonna, I'm sure Scott will help us any way he can, now that he's been elected. And I don't, you know, you, you all may not remember this, but we was out of water last year. Scott made and sent a screw and a compound of, of men and equipment to help us get water back on the coal network now. You know, we had a lot of help from physical coworkers, we had a lot of help from a lot of other people. As far as I can remember, he's the only person outside of Harlan County that helped us. And that helped us get water back on, so, I was happy to see him, you know, win the election, because he, he, he will help us. He helped us last year when we didn't have to.
Yeah, for sure.
It's proven fact.
They had problems themselves, and they were in worse shape, and they left their issues to come help us, so, that, that speaks a lot.
And I've got a good working relationship with Scott and Allen, so they'll help us, and I think they'll both do stories. So, it's always good to have somebody on your side, there, man, frankly, it's best.
Absolutely, so they're gonna submit all the projects, and, and as always, it don't matter what you score in the add district or whatever, whatever legislature wants to fund it, then that's what's funded, so.
Do you have anything else?
No, that's, uh, we're working on, uh, PSC's questions about, uh, the rate increase to B MUDs, since B MUD's part of PSC. They filed a resolution, uh, I don't know what all that entails, but just, uh, you know, kind of had some questions, so. So I have to break down the, you know, Excel spreadsheet, how we came up with that, of course, how we came up with that was how much revenue we needed, so that.
Well, the cost of living in France over the past year.
Right, so I've got to go back to the cost of the plant went up, the cost of everything was up, you know.
You're telling me the chemical increase.
Something called about a new backhoe or something, is that the deal or what?
That'll be, uh, we discussed that as, the way the money is coming from the general assembly is that, that money will be spent out of contingency, which will be at the end. So, they're gonna pay for the engineering, they're gonna pay for the construction, and then we've got money set aside in contingency part for that, or other, whatever we need, and then, that's where it'll come from, but it'll come at the end of the project, so probably next summer.
Okay. I just noticed that the word backhoe had come up.
Yeah.
The thing about getting a new backhoe with this contingency money is it'll be something that'll, I think a backhoe we got now is probably fifteen years now. And it's starting to just get on its last level, so basically it'll be fifteen more years, hopefully, of basic equipment that we, we'd not have.
Who does the service, not backhoe, stuff like that?
Uh, I know who's been doing the service on the backhoe, right now, just brand new. We've got a boy that works for John Deere, out of Kingsport, that's been doing it for us.
Well, I mean, regardless of new or old, you know, you need service and, you know.
Yeah, we've got a, we've got a guy that works, that actually works for John Deere, out of, uh, out of, uh, Kingsport, that's local, that works on the Winkie's force. So if we got something, then we, we think.
I work with mines, we caution every day if we strip it, we grease it, we've done that shit.
And this, and this guy, he's just a, he's a paid mechanic, he's a certified, he's certified with the capstone, he's John Deere for everything, so.
Yeah, and that's just worked on, that's not like he's talking about with, you know, who's jacking and greasing, and that I don't know.
Now, that's what we do as far as greasing and stuff, but as far as servicement, uh, that. As far as everyday greasing and just, that's stuff our guys have to do. And they should be doing that.
Yeah, that's. Morning before we start, thirty minutes per hour or something like that, somebody does that, and at some points, you may want to grease twice a day, or it could use a lot. Doing a heavy load for one day's work here, I should be. That just, I still get that. I've been around that stuff for years, I know, you don't, you don't start to carry the things, because on it, we'll wear out a lot quicker.
Oh, good, well, that real cough really. Does anybody got anything for Woody? Questions, comments, anything for Mike? Alright, I hear a motion, you said one more. Jackie make a motion? Everybody good with it?
Well, I'll go ahead and tell you, I thank y'all for cleaning that flag finally.
Yeah.
Let's go before we clean that.
Thank you, you forward, so I asked him to do it, but the reason being was because I think they were saying that through our engineer, not just anybody can clean that tank, it's dangerous, there has to be somebody specialized. So, we just got them to clean just the flag.
Yeah.
Right. We were, we were, we were real kind of worried about that.
So I called the manufacturer, and he said they had to stay off the seams, and that flag is actually embedded in the tank, so it won't wash off or anything, so it's actually in there, and, uh, we do have a quote to clean the entire tank, somewhere around three thousand dollars.
But that has to be done by a specialized company, don't it?
Yeah, actually, we've got a quote from, I was gonna say, Conley Gap, Pro Wash does a lot of that. Ash Mountain Construction out of Harlan here, actually, is one of them, so quote. They, they actually did the foundation on the tank, and they do the piping and stuff for the tank.
Does that have to be certified to clean that thing? Does somebody has to be certified or?
No, the outside, no, inside, yes. And then, we had talked about if we wanna put a flag on the new tank, but I did talk to the manufacturer, and he said that the red and the flag, it's actually got lead in it, and the sewer plant can't treat it no more, so they can't embed it, so we'd have to do something else. So that was the latest, that was last week.
What's the distance between the two tanks to go whatever they were?
Probably eight feet. There's just not a whole lot of room, and we talked about moving it on the downstream side of the tank, and I don't think we own the property there to do that.
To get a little more married up.
You just gotta do what you have to do, I was like, it's not that close, you know, a little bit.
And there's actually a grind there, he's got a backwash concrete basin there, and then there's another basin that we actually don't have to remove yet, so that we can fit everything in there. So it's really tight spot there.
You up, sir? I'm up, I'm up. Everybody ready?
Damn.
Uh, for the month of October, had a total of, uh, six case reports, of those six, two drug related, three theft, uh, one traffic collision, uh, two motorists assists, twelve complaints, ten agency assists, twenty-seven traffic stops, eleven arrests, and three hundred and eighty-five man hours. Uh, during our drug program, we made, uh, two more drug trafficking arrests, both of those for methamphetamine. Uh, also, with, um, Jennifer Rolfs, we, uh, served a search warrant last week, and we, uh, seized meth, and, uh, we got a another drug, haven't identified yet, we have to send it off for testing, we're able to make them, then, but we'll have to wait for testing to come back before we have that verified.
Damn, where'd he go?
The plates would weigh down, it's not been up that high, I would get the ball, I would have a sixty, oh, a hundred and fifty, in the month. Only about twelve, you said.
Yeah, well, during the summertime, they can get up a little bit, uh, usually nothing crazy, but during the wintertime, they come down even more, so. It's forty watt, it's forty watt.
We've got a lot of people driving heels up at three, four o'clock in the morning.
Four wheeling?
Yes.
Youngers or?
I don't know who, you can hear them bypass my house at night, and I get up, and it's three o'clock in the morning, what is he? And I said, I don't know where I cop to this, I said, I don't know if we got anywhere at that time.
At that time, Brian's usually out till somewhere between two and four, so.
And we got some creepers walking since then, I got out of jail, and most of the big mixing.
Gotcha. Anybody got anything else for D?
The fake marijuana spice. What, is it a felony now, or is it still a misdemeanor, and what, what are y'all doing about that? Because everybody I see when I'm up here, or in Harlan or anywhere, it's making them like, uh, Smokey on Friday, but they, when he's in Debo's Chicken Tooth, if you know what I'm talking, you know, that's really the only way I know to say it. And there's no way, like, every time I see people go to jail for it, well, really, they just tell me in Harlan, they can't do nothing about it, but it's a bad problem.
I, I'm not a hundred percent sure, I don't think it's a felony, I think at most it would be a misdemeanor, uh.
Are you getting a lot of it up here? Cause I've seen.
Honestly, I haven't seen it in a long time.
Really? I've seen a lot of people from Harlan run down my way and be clocked out on that stuff, a lot of locals, I know.
Yeah, I didn't, uh, I, I hadn't seen that since, oh, probably since I was in the early days when I was at the county, and that's been.
Way back in the day when you used to chase me down. Yeah. But no, it's ravaged in this place, but we're, I didn't know how bad it was up here.
No, uh, I personally, I haven't had a problem out of it, but, uh, we haven't seized any from any of our search warrant or stuff we do.
Be watching.
It could just be a recreational thing that a few people are doing, uh, but, I mean.
They get that hard stuff.
If the public knows of anybody that's selling it.
You know, we might sell the spice tail on them, cause it's no good, I'm not being funny, I'm being serious.
It's, it, it does, uh, it makes people act crazy sometimes, it really does.
What about one more thing, and I'll be quiet, the, uh, I seen in Detroit, right below Detroit, the pink cocaine, I'm not being funny in no way, like, it's being mixed with other things and disguised as cocaine, and fentanyl won't even stop it, so, if you didn't know that, be aware, if you see anything pink that's a substance, be careful. Check into that.
That's actually interesting.
Yeah, really.
See something that looked like that from the search.
That's, when you said that, that's what made me bring that up to you, cause you said you didn't know what it was, yeah, just like what Puff Daddy's got, it's all of a sudden a trend ever, where it's all over YouTube and the news and stuff.
See, we're always afraid of fentanyl, just how dangerous it is, so we're wearing like special gloves and stuff, and.
This stuff, Narcan won't face it.
Yeah, well, it does, bro.
Coming from Detroit?
Yes, coming from Detroit, and everywhere, but yeah, mainly down seventy-five.
That's actually, we, we see something that looks similar to that.
Be extra careful. Yeah, they call it Tootsie, it's called, I forget the name of it, but, uh, it's called Tootsie, T U S Y, T U S I, I believe. It's got ketamine and everything in it, but whatever's in it, it's a thousand times stronger than fentanyl. I forget the name of it, D E A, you told me, and I just forgot the name of it. Yeah, but, I just figured I'd tell you that.
Hey, I appreciate it, thank you.
Anybody got anything else for D? Your motion, please, please, please. Everybody make a motion, you're lying second. Everybody good with police report? Thank you, sir. How about you guys, you're in the second, you're third. What? No. Tell him his motion, nice second. Alright, Cleo, you up with the fire report, sir?
Had one fire outside the city, had one LZ, one false run, and two lift systems. That's all we had.
Slow move. Make the motion, make the motion, Jackie second, is everybody good with Cleo's fire report? Next, next to no business. Does anybody got anything on business? Okay, what I got on business tonight is, uh, I've been, still been in contact with Backroads Appalachia? I think that's, uh. Yeah, I think that's, I think that still is as strong as we, you know, when you come in and talk to us, I think that's a real possibility. Actually, they texted me, uh, which will probably be some of new business, but they texted me, him and a person from the state texted me back and forth, and they've been talking to me, which we had talked about it before, but they've talked to me about us maybe setting up a community fire pit, like they have like in some of the bigger places like DC and stuff. And, uh, we've been talking about doing that anyways, cause you know, this is kind of, some of you guys may be impressed with, for sure. When we had the fire pit over at the campground, it was a big thing. And then, you know, over time, it's kind of developed to where it's just mostly in the campground now. Well, they wanna try to do a community fire pit to where maybe like our tourism, we can, or city can, you know, have like, maybe monthly smores or something, you know, just to kind of get the community together, give it something else to do, and when the Backroads Appalachia people are in town, they'll have something to maybe have little fire pit meetings at and things. So we're looking at the property that our, where the old, uh, Eric's wholesale building was, it's clean, and it's, uh, it's really, uh, we take care of it, some, it's a small piece of property, we might build a good fire pit on, and that way, you know, it can be used for that, we'll be able to keep it clean and watch it, instead of having it, you know, like in one of the campgrounds. It may not be used a lot, but now these guys are interested, cause they're interested in that. Kind of things are interested in, and then I kind of pushed it to them too, that it would be a good place because it would be right beside the depot, which, if they're gonna push the community, I wanna push the depot, and I wanna push the battle levers. I've always wanted to do that, I think we deserve a historic marker for that. I've worked in the state for years, but I ain't really had a lot of help, but now that I got these guys on my side, it may be something we may get. So, uh, there's a lot of people that travel the whole state looking at historic markers, and we've got, battle levers was very, very instrumental, you know, that night, and, so, um.
That, that pretty much are the railroad tracks, didn't it?
Yeah, had the railroad tracks, we started at the depot, and moved down the railroad tracks, so.
I remember that, they don't know who shot first or something.
I remember who shot first, but they, it was, that kind of went a long way to the labor wars, you know, it went a long way into everything, so, we think we deserve a historic marker for it.
That's kind of the foundation of bloody Harlan, wasn't it?
It was, in the cold wars. But I had that, and, uh, I want to tell y'all too, the trees on two fifteen, I know you guys have seen this, uh, and I don't remember if I told you this or not, but we had some pine trees there on two fifteen, it was in really bad shape. We were starting to get some high winds, and we was concerned that they were gonna fall on Kentucky thirty-eight or Kentucky two fifteen. So I contacted the state and got them to come cut them down. But when they cut them down, they left them laying, and that made it worse. So we've been in contact with them, and they came up and cleaned half of it, said they'd be back two weeks ago, clean the rest of it. Finally, I just told Cleo to take our boys and go first, go claiming on it, we should do it ourselves. So, Cleo, he's gonna get everything cleaned on that, and get all that cleaned up, except for the biggest stuff. If it's too big for us to handle, I'll hire somebody to come in and chunk it up, and then we might even be able to use it for some outside fire or something, it's pine, so, I don't know how good that would burn, or, but, I know it wouldn't be good inside the house, but it might be alright outside. So, uh, that's all I got on business, you guys got anything? Alright, anybody got any new business? Only thing I got in new business will be that, uh, swearing in for the new council, which all five of you guys are here, so we'll do it next month. Depending on whether Jason comes to the council meeting or not, you're able to leave. If Jason comes, it'll be after, you know, after we get our meeting done, I swear everybody in for next term.